To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask the board members to remain standing, please, and give some thought to consider our purpose this evening. Please remember the men and women of the American military stationed at home and abroad, serving in the cause of this great country. Thank you. I'll break tradition tonight and read the mission statement. Delaware Valley School District in partnership with our community stands committed to maximizing student potential, fostering lifelong learning, and promoting responsible citizenship. I'd like to announce the board met an executive session after the work session on September 10th, 2015, to discuss negotiations on a student issue. Item two on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I have a motion, please. Moved by Pam, second. Second by John Robleski. Discussion. The board will note that I heard from enough folks in between last week and this week and filled in the names for approval items. Nine. E, F, and G, which are the election of PSB officers. If I recall, everybody had an opportunity to at least submit feedback. If they didn't submit feedback, otherwise. But I heard back from the jury and those are the names I heard. Discussion, further discussion. All in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. Item three on the agenda is presentations. I'll turn it over to Superintendent of the School, Mr. Bell, to introduce tonight's presentation.
Okay, thank you. We have four presentations tonight, five minutes each, so we'll be more than just joke stuff, sorry. All right, the first presentation is Loretta Woodson Award, and I invite Mrs. Evers to come up to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Evers, a 21-year retiree in Delaware Valley School District and president of the Pike County chapter of the Pennsylvania Association of School Retirees. I have been in this position for six years. It is a two-year position. Because of my age and health, I am no longer going to continue. So our organization is in the process of merging with Wayne County, and it's hopeful that it will carry from here. The history of the organization, it started in 1937, and Pike didn't join, I think, until 64. And then, after that, there was a few years went by when it was inactive. But rather than just let it go inactive, for those of us who do like the involved, we are trying to merge. There are mergers, many of them in the Northeast region, Missouri, Wyoming, and that kind of counties. So these awards, which I had very happily been able to present for six years, will cease, except for the fact that maybe once every four years, someone in the Delaware Valley School District may be recognized, because there are three school districts in Wayne. I don't like that, but I'm going to travel, and I'm going to spend more time with my family, and watch my health. All right, so Loretta Woodson was a Chester resident who retired from Temple University and joined our organization, which wishes to serve, not be served, of course. What we do in the community that the school retiree system that moves you into retirement does is that we take care of bad people who are older. We take them, give them gifts at Christmas and Easter, Valentine's Day, and remember them and visit them in the hospitals, and that sort of thing. Unfortunately, those other organizations don't have any time for that level. So we are trying to get money to getting a COVID headwind over here, so believe. And it's just not right, because one of our former governors took all the money and spent it. And so now they don't, they're constantly in trouble with pensions. Right now, there's political issues with pensions. Everybody's saying, don't sign the latest Pennsylvania budget because of the fact that they want to give the schools money and forget all about pensions. They don't want to address the pension issue at all. And a lot of us are getting older, and a lot of you people are going to be getting older too, and following this system. And I hope somebody's there to look after you. In the meantime, Loretta left money when she died, and they recognize a school professional and a support staff person, professional. Our organization includes any school retiree. Mr. Baum, could you come up and sing praises to Gary Patroneo? Gary, please stand, because Mr. Baum is the one who made the recommendation, so he knows him and knows his abilities.
Sure. When I was asked to present this, I was pretty excited. And when I was thinking to myself, who best to recognize on our staff of outstanding teachers, one of the first people that popped in my head was Gary. Gary is just the type of person who will do absolutely anything. He'll sacrifice periods to work. He's involved in a multitude of ways for the district. He's got the district's foreign language program recognized many times. When we started talking about adding the freshman seminar class next year, the foreign language department chair was the first person to stand up and say, I would like to help write that curriculum. And that's just the epitome of Gary. He does whatever we need him to, and I was very pleased to recognize him for this award.
Thank you so much. And it's a shame we can't recognize a lot more people, because there are many people following this category. Thank you. We also have a support person to recognize, Deborah Allen. Would you come forward, please? You're on again.
Same thing. Very pleased to recognize one of our support persons. And this one was also, because so many people had helped in so many different ways, but the decision was made a little easier, because every time we've ever had an issue in the high school, unfortunately, if it was a health issue or if we had an emergency, and I told this to Debbie, it amazes me how she's in the 910 office, but it doesn't matter if it's the stadium, the parking lot, the 1112, the pool, she's the first person to be there. I don't know what kind of shoes she wears, but she flies around the building. So again, it was a pleasure to recognize Debbie for just always stepping in in an emergency. She's excellent.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you so much. In recognition of unselfish dedication, exemplary service to the Delaware Valley High School and the Delaware Valley School District in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we thank you on behalf of the youth of today and the future of tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I just want to make sure I spell Deborah Allen's name correctly.
A-L-L-E-N.
A-L-L-E-N. And Deborah?
D-E-R-A.
Okay, no H.
No H.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Our next presentation is by Jill Camponi, the reality. One of these for board members. Take a poll around. I was told 10 minutes, by the way, John Bell.
Excellent question and answer.
I will keep this brief and possible. My name is Jill Camponi. In light of the recent speaker, I hesitate to say, but I do work for Representative Mike Piper. And, but I'm also the director of the Reality Tour Prevention Program, which started in 2007, in 2008, in Pike County, under the Child Death Review Program. We were reviewing deaths of children with overdose, and we decided that one was too many, and we needed another program in the community for that. So we have a research program, a licensed program. It is site-specific. I hear every single Reality Tour we do that we should bring up to the school while we can. The license is licensed to the Milford Bible Church right now. That's where we hold the program. So it was first conducted at First Presbyterian Church. That didn't work out, because we could only have Saturdays there. So we switched churches. And we are now officially a Model 1C3, so we can sort of sustain ourselves through getting some sponsorship with that. What the Reality Tour is, is it's a sequence of, it's a three-hour program that parents must attend with their child. The children have to be 10 years of age or older. And in the beginning, they register. There is a $5 suggested donation for the program per person. That is never, nobody's ever denied because of money. So if they can't pay that donation, that's fine. They just need to let us know. During the registration process, every student gets their picture taken, and during the tour, we morph their photos. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that. Everybody is given a drug profile. When they enter the tour, both adults and children are given a drug profile. We cover about 25 different drugs in the program. And on the back is a sticker, and I'll explain that in a minute, too. But everybody that enters the program becomes a drug addict and has a drug of choice. The only two drug profiles that we have for children that are different than adults are alcohol and tobacco, because they're legal for adults and not for children. So we ask them to study that, look through that. We discuss the consequences of that. We do preview surveys and exit surveys. It is evidence-based. We have to report back, and I'll tell you a little bit about that, too. As far as the dots on the back of the drug profiles, there's four dots. And we tell them in the beginning of the program to, if you have a yellow dot, you have a $100 a day drug habit. If you have a blue dot, you have $200 a day drug habit. If you have a green dot, I look at the clock and I say, it's quarter after 7:00, you're a drug dealer, $500 by the end of the night. How are you going to do that? And then if you have a purple dot, I tell them to look to the next scene very carefully, because it's a jail scene. That's where they'll be spending the rest of their life. So it is very, there's a lot of dramatic scenes in this. And the dramatic scene starts with a peer pressure scene. And I have to give accolades. Kim Golden, she is outstanding in getting students for me. I rely on her. I don't know that I could do this program without her. So just if you see her, thank her for that, please. She's wonderful in getting students for that. And as well as having an act out, that peer pressure scene. And that is the first scene that we do. Then there is an arrest scene. We actually have a police officer come in and arrest a student right in front of everybody, slams him down on the table. It's not Jack and Tiger, Jack's been there before. It is very real. We go to a jail scene, and we have PVC pipes painted gray, and we have to do jail scene. From there, we do an overdose scene with an ambulance. We have Delaware Township Volunteer Ambulance that comes and does this for us. We have a child overdose. They take the child out in the ambulance, drive around the building entrance, where we have an ER scene. And Eleanor was here. I was going to thank her. She has participated in our ER scene before. Very fortunate, I don't need any actors for this. I, police officers, nurses, car, Mr. Muggly has come out several times, so we can use actors, but I don't have to in this community. I'm very fortunate that way. The ER scene, the child does overdose and die. From there, we go to the sanctuary in church, and we have a funeral scene. We do have a coffin set up. We have the family. We have everybody that goes through the tour greet family, just as you would in a regular funeral scene. From there, we have a law enforcement question and answer piece, where parents and children can ask questions, you know, about drug use and the laws and different things that can help them possibly with that. We also have a recovering addict question and answer piece, and that is probably the most powerful part of this program. We try to get the youngest recovering addicts that we can, but they definitely take up the bulk of the time, and they are very, very powerful speakers. And almost every single exit survey that we get, we hear that the recovering addict is the most impactful part of that program. Then I come in and I do parent skills. I do director's talk. I talk about a family health policy. This program does advocate drug testing. We advocate drug testing at a very young age, just like you take your child to the doctor for a physical. We advocate that you start drug testing at 10, 11, 12 years old, and just make it part of your family history, what you do. It's not a consequence, it's just what you do. That way, when they're 16 and want keys to the car, they're not likely to say, no, I don't want to get drug tested anymore. So we do advocate for that. I do a favorite food exercise, where I go around the room and I ask everybody, what's your favorite food? And I ask you to give up that food for one month. Tell the kids to do it and challenge their parents to do it. I tell parents to challenge their children to do it. If they can't do that, they're not going to beat a drug addiction. So that's the point to that exercise. From there, we talk about the drug profile consequences. How are you going to get your drug dealer $100 by the end of the night, $200 by the end of the night? That leads to crime, prostitution, you name it. That's all brought out in that conversation. From there, we do sometimes present a prevention DVD. We've had some trouble with that, but I have to be in compliance with my license with that, so we're going to get that straightened out for our next tour. In your package, you'll see we have two tours coming up. We have a tour on October 22nd and a tour on November 19th, both Thursday evenings. We do ask that, we have a big banner, which I didn't bring tonight, but we have a banner that we ask the kids to trace their handprint on, and that's their pledge to be drug-free. So, and we ask them to put their name on that. Everybody leaves with an exit packet, and that's where the morph photo comes in. We have the exit packets here. And we have local, national, and state resources in here for parents, in case their child does, they have something to turn to for that issue if that happens. And we also morph their photo during the whole three hours, and it takes that whole three hours to morph all these photos, trust me. But we present a photo of the child made to look like they'd been taking drugs. And we encourage them to put that on the mirror and never look like that. So that's something that we do. And then at the end, we do exit surveys, of course. And what you have in your packets is a handout for school collaboration. And that's why I'm here tonight. It's about school collaboration. This is fairly self-explanatory. This is what I'm talking about here. John Bell has been very, very gracious on sending out the registration forms beginning of the year. He's also mailed them out for us. We pay for each place of the labels on them. But our attendance has grown significantly because of that. In the past, we've had to cancel many tours. We've held tours with as little as two or three families. Last two tours, we had 70 people and 55 people. Something's changing in the community. So people are recognizing it. We want to, you know, reduce the shame and that kind of thing. But some things that you could do as a school are, if, you know, health teachers want to attend with the teacher night, or a principal wants to attend with the principal night, we can promote that. We generally do four tours a year, October, November, and March and April. That's basically working around the church's schedule. And my volunteers, it takes about 40 volunteers to pull off this. And we get them every time. So I really can't complain about that. There's a star parent program, where it's a sticker. If you attend, you put a star parent sticker in your car. There's a newsletter that anybody can get. I send it to anybody that comes to the tour that wants to share their email. I do make sure that they get the newsletter each month. That's a monthly newsletter that comes from Candle Inc., which is who developed this. Candle is an acronym. It stands for Community Action Network for Drug-Free Lifestyle Empowerment. About 10 times. I could do an in-service day for teachers. I could speak to teachers that day. But there's a lot of things in this packet if you go through, if you have some ideas that you think might to collaborate. I'm very happy with what the school's done so far. I just want everybody to be aware of it and to promote it in any way you possibly can. Anybody have any questions?
What's the typical age of the, in the, end of the parents?
It's 10 and up. And this last registration form that we sent out, we sent to fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. For the March tour, we targeted fifth and sixth grade. For the April tour, we targeted seventh and eighth grade. So we're trying to get all the different kids within there. When we're doing the mailing, as opposed to sending out in the first day of school packets, it costs us a lot more. So that's something that we have to consider. We do have a sponsor for this. It is Rich Creedy and Matt Osterberg. Not as commissioners, as county money, they personally sponsor the tour. We already have been sponsoring. Looking for one more sponsor, we ask that the sponsorship be $250. That $500 sponsorship about covers the cost of the tour. We do get to feed our volunteers. That's how we get them there. So we give them pizza, we give them subs, whatever, whoever we can get to donate some food to us, we do that. So that's, you know, that's basically what it is in a nutshell. And I welcome all of you to attend one of the tours.
If there was, you know, one thing that we could do to help you, what would be just like on the top of the list?
Word of mouth. Spread the word. Tell people about the program. That is one of the best things. Social media, I hate it, despise it with every bone in my body, but it is a very, very, very powerful tool.
Maybe on the marquee outside.
That would be great, yeah. If you could do something a week before the tour. I know we had discussed that at one point. You weren't doing that yet with the community. But John has been very open to suggestions and very willing to meet with me on any occasion. So I'll be taking your information.
I went on this tour with Jill. I mean, these kids today, there's so many different ways they can get into trouble with drugs. It's amazing how many different ways you can get involved with this. And I really believe that we need to hit the drug problems from different angles. So I heard about this Reality Tour, and that God's honest truth, I said to myself, how real can this be? But when she says an officer slams a kid into the ground, I said, I wondered, did I kid really just get arrested? And that's how real it actually was. And again, too, they brought in four young speakers. They couldn't have been out of high school very long whatsoever. And any child that we have in our district is going to go on something like this, and they're going to be able to identify with that person, because that person is closer in their range range, you know? And plus, I know you don't use, you say you didn't use the actors. You have, you know, people like the police chief. But you have a lot of actors and actresses there, and a lot of them are from our school, the ones that you see.
Students.
Yes, students.
Absolutely, yes.
You see them in our plays, when you go to the plays here and stuff, and they're fantastic. So when we bring our students to these things, and our children, they can see their fellow students there, and they're acting. And it's, of all the things I've seen, this is, this was the most powerful. It really is a powerful thing. And I was appreciative that I went on it. It was far more better than I could have ever expected. And it was really reality. And, you know, Jill had explained to me about the jail cell, it's made out of PVC piping. Okay, you can see that, all right, this is not a real jail cell, obviously. But they do it so well, that it makes you feel like you're in a jail cell, because the officer is talking with the young person that just was arrested.
There's a voiceover, a recovering addict. The addict is actually, in four of the scenes, with the exception of the peer pressure scene and the overdose scene, the addict is actually, there's a voiceover. And he's talking about his addiction and what he's going through. Wow, I can't believe I'm sitting here and jailed this cop, you know, what is he doing? You know, that kind of thing. So the actors really don't say too much at all, to be honest. And I think that's how I get participants, because we're playing a voiceover the entire time. And it's that addict talking about his experience and what he's going through. And in the ER scene, what are they talking about? I'm not going to make it. What are they talking about? I'm not going to make it, you know? And then all of a sudden, they pull the sheet over the child. And you see tears, absolutely, in every single, and I've been doing this eight years, and every time, I have tears in my eyes. So, you know, and I know it's fake.
The thing that I got most of is, after it was over, I went to every kid I could possibly get home and asked them, what do you think of that? And they all said the same, like, I'm never going to touch this stuff on that. So it plants a seed in their head. And I think that's what we should be doing. And so many of them were young, just 10, 11, 12 years old. I think the area got older. The odds of overcoming addiction like that, they drastically go down. So I think, you know, target audiences, you're doing up to the eighth grade, that's when we need to catch these children.
Yeah. And one other thing I want to share with you is, in the exit surveys that we ask, it asks, what could your school do about this drug abuse problem? And I took the March responses, and these were the March responses from the students. You help have a drug scanner, not sure what that is. Test more students and more programs. Teach about it in health classes. Help kids teach this program, meaning the Reality Tour. Start checking lockers. Just try their best to stop it. Be more careful. That was the same child who, by the way, answered the question, what is a gateway drug? It was Ebola. Very helpful. Test everyone for drugs. Drug test more often and randomly. Teach kids what drugs really can do. Have more assemblies about drugs, and again, more assemblies. This is what your students are saying.
This is for everybody's identification. We test everybody that we're legally allowed to test. It is random, and we have the state police canines that can do this stuff in lockers, too. And we teach it very well.
Jill, thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I have the copy now. I won't let you take home. We made nine copies for the nine offices, for the school offices and this office. So if you'll leave them here at the end of the night, because it is online for your online reading pleasure. This is the annual report for this past school year. This is the third year in a row we've done it. Typical format, at the beginning, there's a list of highlights for the district wide, and then it goes by building. Each school has highlights, and then each academic department has highlights. And then there's also a scorecard of results. If you'll look, and let's see, we'll do the high school, for example. Let's just keep looking there. The high school is on page, on 17, if you go to 17. And for the public, this is already on the website. You go on the homepage, you go to the right where the alphabetical listing of topics are, and just click on annual report. And now you'll see three years' worth of annual reports. There's the scorecard for the high school with the last three years of data. And then it's the same way for all the other schools, and then there's data in there for every department, for every academic department, their passing rates in courses, what courses they offer, the number of kids that take it, class sizes, state testing, AP testing, all that information is there. So it's the same format we followed in the past. I thought that the department has earlier today, and I thank them for all their help getting this together, as were the principals. And it really is two major accomplishments. Number one, it helps us reflect on everything we accomplished over the course of the last school year. And it makes them sit down and at the end of the year, and reflect on all the things we've done, and put it together into a bulleted format. But then it also has us track our data, so that we can have plans on how do we move forward. And next month, you'll hear what I made about a strategic plan where we use the scorecards data to help set our goals for the year 2020. And then we'll be writing action plans on how to get from point A to point B, from 2015 to 2020. Another nice thing about this is it shares a tremendous amount of data from all seven schools, so that people from the community who spend their tax dollars, you know, their tax dollars drive everything that we do. So this is a level of transparency that there's never been before, until we did this before, so that people will know where do their tax dollars go, what is the investment. And again, I do look at it as not an expense, but an investment. And the tax dollars are an investment in the education program, and then these are the results that are public for anybody to read, to know really, what are their dollars go for, and what are the results we get. So that's it. Summary of the highlights, and a show of how the money's invested and what it's doing for us here at Delaware Valley.
Now, I want to thank you and the staff for this together. It's really tremendously valuable, certainly for the community. And remember, Bill Greenlaw leaned on you pretty quickly when you first came here to put something together on this. But it really has become a great document to look at and get a good snapshot and detail of the district that you might otherwise get. So, thank you.
Jill, can I ask, how do we make the public aware of its, you said it's on the...
It's on the website.
On the website. I just wonder if there's anything else we can do to let people know that it's there?
What we'll do is, we'll run an article tomorrow in the headlines, so that, because if people don't look at the ABC alphabetical list, they may not know. So we'll run an article in the headlines, and I'm sure all the media will cover this tonight.
Yeah, because I agree with Chris Axe, this is a terrific resource to understanding what goes on here. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Do we send out a email, mass email to folks? Should we just put this as a link on the bottom?
What we could do is, we could put it on our Facebook page.
Put it on Facebook page?
You know, it'll be on the homepage of the website, and then we'll also, we'll send it out on Facebook, which will then have the link to it.
That's a great idea.
And if you guys can help put it in paper, that'd be great. Thank you. And on the web.
I know when Julie sends us our monthly email, she's got the click right there, we can just tap her instead of kind of find out where we've got to go for this. It's so much easier when someone gives you the link, you can write it right on.
Okay.
Nice.
Thank you, everybody. No, Chuck said no paper. No. Actually, if you do want a copy, just let Julie know, and we'll make you a copy. We're going to put these in the buildings and the offices, because these are great things to have in the waiting areas of all the buildings, while people are waiting for appointments or picking up their kids. It's great to have, because they get to learn things that they might never have a chance to do, except when they're stuck for five minutes waiting for their third and a half class. So you've got them captive for five minutes.
Online, it is a PDF that you can download in the store, so really no reason not to have a paper copy.
Okay, our next presentation, the final presentation of the night, is my Dr. Purcell Shaffer and Vives on the test scores.
Well, we thought we'd stay right here in our seats and talk to you about this. And I want to take us back in time a little bit, before we put our scores up there, just to remember where we've come from and where we're going. And if you remember, No Child Left Behind, which is still yet to be reauthorized, State of Pennsylvania asked for a waiver before we kicked 2014, which was when all of our students had to be proficient. Pennsylvania received that waiver, and rather than having all of our students need to be proficient, we were granted a growth model. We had to come up with a state, we had to come up with as a state, something that would show that we are growing. And we developed, as Gena developed, the School Performance Profile. And that School Performance Profile, if you remember, takes a lot of data into consideration, a big component of our test scores. So that's where we have been for the past year, and we're on theme, PA Core Standards, which followed our national standards, which are great standards. They're very rigorous, they're difficult, they really check down on our students and standards, and requiring us to have our students think critically, apply what they've learned. I can start the PowerPoint now. They really challenge our students, they challenge our teachers, but in a very good way. And if you remember, John, we talked about next generation tests. Well, these are those next generation tests. So what Pennsylvania decided to do, thinking about that, was, we really need to take a pause. They asked the federal government for another waiver, saying these tests, these new standards came out, they're very rigorous, the tests are rigorous, we need to take a step back and give our students, our teachers, the time to get familiar, the time for these tests. So we did receive a waiver, and that waiver, for one year is in place, that we will not be getting School Performance Profiles, we will not be having those scores from K to H. They're giving us a year, because they took a look at the scores, as in many other states, that they dropped significantly. And what we want to do is that we really can't take a look back. So when I say the scores dropped, yes, they dropped from the past years, but we're not comparing apples to apples. It's a different test, it's a different set of standards, the questioning, the reasoning. So because of that, we have a year to, as we started to do, revise curriculum, purchase new materials, to really get our students and teachers where they need to be.
So Gina, is it fair to say that we're creating a new baseline here?
Exactly, John. This will be the baseline. And actually, what, and I know John was involved in that webinar, too, what the director of policy said was, put those tests aside, put those scores aside, look at them again in the summer, when you have your next round of tests, and that's where you need to compare and see where the growth is. You really can't compare from last year, because it's a whole different ballgame. It's apples to oranges. And this isn't Delaware Valley saying this, this is either Pennsylvania saying this. So that's the message we wanted to get across, before we show you the test scores, which we will show you them in comparison to the state, and we're holding our own, and you'll see that.
I think a big, just right before you get to this big point, to say is that districts across the state, and we're all obviously facing the same thing. I mean, in essence, this is a tested name, the same name as it was last year, but in actuality, it's aligned to the whole degree, from a comparative standpoint, you can't make it. So just a big point to make, and it's not really, especially for the press department, it's not an anomaly in terms of what our districts are experiencing versus in the other provinces.
And in the scorecards in your book, if you look actually on page 29 in your book, Dinkman's Middle School, as an example, you'll see asterisks next to certain test scores. And then at the bottom, it says, these are new PSSA exams unlike the others in previous years, so do not compare this year's results to the prior year's results. It's literally, it's like the PSAT versus the SAT. They're two different things, you can't compare them.
And not only are they more rigorous, but the content has also moved around. So we're learning different things in fourth grade than we were last year. So especially in the area of math, things have really shifted. So it's more rigorous, it's more application, it's more critical thinking, and we're learning different content in different courses, in different grade levels. So as we start to look at the assessment data, you'll note that we have met or exceeded the state average in all of the subjects, except for one grade level in one particular building, but in all the other ones, we've met or exceeded. And the one thing that, as Gina mentioned, incorporating new higher-level standards, but one of the major things is, we never before incorporated writing into the lower levels as well. It was only in fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade prior, way back when, that writing was a separate assessment. So this is the first year that writing is incorporated into English Language Arts, and it also, writing's incorporated into mathematics. So it really has had an impact across the board, in terms of how students can look at problem-solving, both in English Language Arts, and as well as in mathematics, and really dig into what are the questions that are being asked. So it really has challenged our students. In fact, in the Dinkman Delaware Elementary School, a couple of students went up to Mrs. McMillian and said, I really think they're trying to trick us, because I know what the problem is asking, but that's not what it says. And these are the best three-part questions, and they have to keep going back. So the assessments are done very differently and in new and much more challenging ways. The science assessment is not a new assessment, I just want to point out. That is the same assessment that we've had in prior years. So that really hasn't changed. And you'll see our science scores are pretty much where they, in comparing science to science last year, were right where we were in previous years. And the reason why science, of course, hasn't changed is because we do not have core standards in science. We still have the same E.A. academic standards. This just shows the same exact data in graph form. So the red is the Delaware Valley Elementary School, the one next to that is Dinkman Delaware Elementary School, Sheola, and the district averages in that bluish gray, and the state average. And that's in English Language Arts, and then the next slide shows the same data in
Will this presentation be available online?
Yeah, or a hard copy or something.
I do have hard copies.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be very happy.
And the board members, you will have hard copies of me. And that's as well.
You can see also, the results for Delaware Valley Middle School and Dinkman Delaware Middle School, six through eight. As Peg said, the scores have met or exceeded the state averages, in both ELA and in math. And our science is in the same range as it was last year.
Jill, what does that mean, 29%?
That means 29.9% of the students are proficient or advanced.
Under the same standard as AYP, proficient and advanced? It's a whole different set of standards.
It's the same set of standards, however, it's a new baseline, and it's going to be a growth model based on the School Performance Profile. So we're not comparing last year's 10%. It's, you're starting with a whole new, a whole new...
A whole new test and a whole new baseline?
But that is proficiency, that's what you're asking.
Yeah. What did you...
30% of the state is proficient or advanced, right? So that tells you where the bar really has, the bar has actually gone way up, but because of the rigor of the assessment, so the scores are going to be lower overall.
So we got to where we were when they started No Child Left Behind, with that whole new...
In a lot of respects, that is what happened around the country, that all the progress that was made under old standards got washed away when they brought more regular standards in. So you're starting all over again, trying to rebuild to a new set of standards, a new way of testing. For those that's been around a long time, it's a strange expansion.
Yeah, and as Peg said, for the elementary, it's the same at the secondary level, both in math and reading. There is a tremendous amount of writing in response to the reading and the math. So, you know, about 40% of the ELA tests, students are writing in response to reading.
Seems like we're above state average in everything, except some of the eighth-grade mathematics courses. Is there a reason for that? The eighth grade, we're right at the state average.
Yeah, there is a reason for that. In the eighth grade, many of our eighth-grade students take Algebra I. And that is a graduation requirement statewide. So the majority of the curriculum that is taught in the eighth grade is the Algebra I curriculum. So, and the teachers focus on that, because students must pass it to graduate high school. So there is more of an emphasis on Algebra I than there is on the PSSA core math standards.
Those kids take two tests, those eighth graders. They take the Keystone, which is a high school test, and then they take the eighth-grade PSSA. But we're pushing them for the Keystone, so that hurts your PSA scores, because they're not getting 180 days of PSSA stuff. We're pushing them for the higher one.
And it's trying to find that balance of making sure that you, the students have what they need to be successful on the PSSA, but yet push them to that Keystone. And those Keystone scores in eighth grade are banked. They're banking when the students get into high school. So that's why, if you start hearing, middle schools take Keystone and PSSA, but we're still not having SVP, because those Keystone scores are never attributed to the middle school, they're always attributed to the high school when the students get here.
In some other states, they've exempted the eighth graders who were taking the high school course and the high school exam, they've exempted them from having to take the middle school eighth grade test, but we're not there yet. We're still lobbying for that, because it doesn't make sense that they can take two tests, make them take the test for the course they're in. If you're in the lower course, take the eighth grade test. If you're in the higher course, take the Keystone. So we're not there yet, but we're still lobbying.
It's difficult. It's very difficult to accomplish both in one course.
And at this point in time, the high school SVP is not out. The state's still in the verification of data phase. And when the high school data does come out, it comes out for 11th grade. So all the tests that are taken between eighth, ninth, 10th, and 11th are then put together, and the students get, we get a proficiency level of the amount of students who were proficient on that exam. Some kids took it in eighth, some in ninth, some in 10th, some in 11th.
Some of you guys that have been on the board for a while, they remember my coming back here after going to a Bill Daggett concert, and talking about critical thinking skills and application of knowledge, rather than memorization of knowledge. This has come home to roots. That's what these tests are about. These tests are now testing the skills that our children are going to need to be successful in the global economy. They're not testing their ability to memorize facts in the Gersttaker, which any computer can do. Okay? They have to demonstrate their ability to think and to produce something new, based upon the knowledge that they have. It's a much, much more difficult test to pass, but the growth that's involved for our students is going to bring them to a much higher level. And while this, these initial results, you look at this, and you say, 38% were proficient and advanced, that's awful. Remember, this is a baseline, and this is a whole new game that we're playing. So it's, in the long run, it's going to be a good thing. But there's going to be a lot of growing pains and a lot of misunderstanding about what these test results mean. So it's important that we, as board, understand that brand-new tests, brand-new skills that we're testing, and we're working on those skills.
The School Performance Profile that we've had in the past two years, the PVA score was an important part of that, correct? And I mean, a lot of our high-performing schools did very low on their PVA scores because there wasn't as much room for growth. So, not that, you know, not that we want our scores to go down or, you know, by any means, but this is going to help those schools, because now there's room for growth for them.
That's the silver lining.
Right. I mean, if there ever was a silver lining, you know, that's... Right. I mean, if there ever was a silver lining, you know, that certainly does help that rich, never mind.
That was a great segue, P-VAS. That was perfect.
That wasn't planned, but that was a great segue. Did you read the packet?
No, I'm on it. I haven't got ahead yet.
As P-VAS, we were, P-VAS will be, is still being used for the 14, 15 school year. They will use the, if you go to the next slide, it explains it even better. What has happened statewide is the state has predicted what the student's score will be this year. And if you look at the distribution of PSSA scores in seventh grade, on the first arrow up and down, you'll see the star is higher. The state actually predicted that the scores would drop. So they have predictions for every student who is going to take the test in the eighth grade. You will get growth points if the student achieves above the prediction. So that's the way P-VAS will work. They say growth model, this year, we knew, they knew, the state knew, the scores would drop. So that was the prediction. We have predictions that if they score higher, we'll get P-VAS points. If they score lower, you end up in the yellows and the reds, as you remember from the old P-VAS reports.
Now, think of this for a minute. Think of the star on the left as a 90, and the star on the left on the right is a 70. So basically what the state is saying, just to give you some context, is zero through 100. The state's saying, if you got 90 on the old test, you'll probably only get a 70 on this test. So on the new harder test, if you get above 70, then you're gonna get a positive P-VAS score because you grew beyond the 70. So they're saying 90s are equivalent to 70s because now it's harder. And so if you're above 70, then you show growth.
So we won't be penalized?
Right. We now finally, because we're not, like Jess said, we're not so high anymore. We actually have room to grow. When we were at 95% passing, there was hardly anywhere to go, and we were getting killed by our growth scores because how do you make growth from a 99% power?
Are they gonna continue with that priority throughout? Because it's gonna change my idea of the year basis.
Well, I think what'll happen now is now they'll use the new standard, the new star on the right, and then you'll keep growing from that star on the right. And, but you won't see the trajectory go like this, that was a one-time trajectory. Now it'll be more constant, that a 70 this year is equivalent to a 70 next year because now the new test is in place.
Yeah, and the next month, the state will come out with the predictions for students for the test this year. So we'll be able to print out reports that prediction is for the student to score on the 2016 PSSA. Our goal is to get the students higher than that prediction.
I think to a certain extent, when you look at P-VAS scores now, you're looking at both the teacher's ability to teach, but also the teacher's ability to adapt teaching style that is going to be reflected in the new test. So teachers that have been teaching for many, many years are now going to have to change their strategy a little bit based upon what's being tested.
And the advantage we have now, it's now that we have the test data, we will begin to drill down into the areas where we need work. And as a result, be able to make some adaptations to instruction to focus on what we have to get better at.
This slide just talks about some of the action steps. So we have all this data in front of us. We know what we have to do, how we're going to accomplish what we need to accomplish. And some of these things we've already put into place. As you know, we just adopted a new reading series, and that reading series was built from the ground up based on core standards. We've continued to do training. We've done some, of course, we've revised our curriculum. We've taken a look at our interventions in ELA. We've added Read 180 in our sixth grade. We have additional sections as needed in our high school. And we developed a new middle school reading program, and that was one of the books that you approved for seventh grade. We really needed to bolster that. And we've, in our middle school and high school, we now do what we've done for years, many years in our elementary. We have our reading specialists who are pushing into our English classes, and they started pushing into our CTE last year. So working along with the teachers, co-teaching, modeling, it's been successful in the elementary, and we've started that this year in the high school.
We've started, well, we've always done diagnostic benchmarking in reading for many, many years. We start off the year. This year, we also started benchmarking in mathematics in the elementary level in grades three, three through five. And we're gonna continue to develop additional assessments for first and second grade as well. We don't have that yet, so that's why you'll see an updated and developing the mathematics when there is a mathematics plan on the secondary level, and we have one for the upper elementary, but we don't necessarily have one for the primary grades. And every year, we have our reading assessment plan, K through 12. So when we're doing any remediation, we make sure we have the best tests, the best benchmarks, and so on. So we are constantly looking at raising that bar. This year, we integrated one of the comprehension assessments from Reading Wonders, which is our new series, and it is difficult. And we've looked at some pretty rigorous and glaring results, so it's actually very helpful in terms of us diagnosing where we need to start the year with the teachers. And we do that every year, but it's just one more piece of the puzzle, so.
I haven't been to a Dr. Daggett conference for a couple of years now, but at the last conference I attended, Read 180 was the only reading program that he would support. And it took a long time to get that reading program brought to our district. It'll be about eight years if I need that. So I'm so happy to see that you have expanded it. It's an excellent program. And I think it'd be great for some of the new members to see how it operates. A pretty unique, exciting reading program.
And we will grow that. So it's in our nine and 10 because we've grown it there. It's now in our six, and it'll be six, seven, and eight as we continue to grow. I'm gonna use it a great program, and thank you, Pam. You really helped coming in to the board.
It would really be worth it, I think, for the new members to observe. You can work that out.
The classroom setting itself, yeah, pretty amazing.
And we're probably going to need more money to furnish this notch and expand.
And you should come and see the two we did.
Okay, yeah, I would like to.
We've implemented it.
It's just not your usual standard.
No, it's not. Very different. We listed targeted SMART goals because as John talked about, our strategic plan.
Can we give them a strategic plan, or like?
No, that was.
That's fine. That was the pre-30. Next month, I'll do a presentation for the board on strategic plan.
And with that strategic plan, we had SMART goals that are very targeted to student achievement. So that, again, is part of our action steps. We implemented student learning objectives last year, which is part of the teacher evaluation plan, and we focused on writing because it cuts across all disciplines. And we're gonna continue with those goals. We should also be able to integrate another person that they want to add or buy, but we feel that writing is still too mainstream. And we know we need to have new materials and resources in math. We talked about that last year. We talked about K5. And we really decided as a district and our teachers as well that to try to implement two series in one year would be very difficult to do and do well. So we need to, again, look at math, but now we're thinking not just K5, but really K8. And really research, take a look at what our needs are, and then present something to the production next year. And professional development, that's key, and that's something. One of the things we talked about was that the IU has been great in providing us with consultants to work with our reading and our writing. Math, there hasn't been as many opportunities, so that's something I've gone back to the IU and say, "We need a little bit more professional development there." We can do our own as well, but that targeted professional development, looking at where our students are weak once we analyze that data. And it is a different, different learning and different teaching, different strategies. So it's new to all of us, but that's, these are, these are the things we're targeting for this year.
And one final note, on the top of your packets, and we've certainly provided a copy of it, is the letter to the parents from Peter Rivera, the new secretary of the Department of Education. And I think that really, when the Department of Ed really is upfront and says what the challenges are with these new assessments, I think it will take parents, they'll put parents' minds at ease a little bit. And, but he basically said, "We're starting over," in his letter. And hopefully, that's the message that parents will hear, won't be so shocked when they get those letters.
So. It's hard the first time you go through this as a parent or as a student or as a teacher. When you've been around like some of us, this is your third or fourth set of standards. So you've seen this, and every time you get to the mountaintop, you get knocked down, and you gotta start over. But we know the process. We just have to put it in place now to get going.
So Peg, did this letter go home?
It will go home with the reports to the families, probably next week.
So under the professional development, you can drill down to each student, like we've always been able to do. And are you able to drill down to each teacher?
Yes.
And then have that teacher take certain courses for the deficiencies in those classes?
We can suggest it, however.
Only John can do it.
And this new thing I've been talking about is called professional learning communities. And this is teams of teachers that get together, that plan together, create the tests together, create the reading policies together. One of the things they do is they drill down to look at how kids do on the test to say, okay, how's everybody doing with something particular? Say, maybe it's dividing fractions. All across the board, this class, this grade is not doing well dividing fractions. We gotta put our heads together on how to reteach this. Or it might be, your class and Zach's class are doing great, but my class isn't. So then that's when the conversation has to be, okay, how are you teaching it? You teach it compared to how I teach it. And then either I change my strategies when I reteach, or I might even say, hey, Jack, I'll cover your class and I'll intro the next chapter. You come to my class and give them a reteach. And this is, that's a huge shift from the old goal with your 25 kids and your goal with your door closed and I'll see you in June. So it's a big cultural shift to get people to work with you and do this. But, you know, when Zach and I had the phone call with the Larry King Fox News, whatever that was, they asked us, "What's the biggest thing about your district that puts you where you are?" And we both looked at each other and laughed right away and said, "It's our teachers. It's our teachers that make the different things. They're the ones that are just killing themselves with our kids." So now when we teach them about this new model, I think they'll be very, very receptive to it because they're not that closed-door, by-myself kind of people, you know?
And this is all part of the nationwide Common Core?
It's the PA Core.
It's the PA Core.
And there's a slight difference. There's a 15%, we will get a 15% leeway if we wanted to change national core standards and develop PA Core. So there are some differences.
The biggest difference for us compared to some of our neighboring states is that almost every state, 48 states originally, we're gonna join one of two consortiums, and then we're gonna be these common tests across states. So New York, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, we're all gonna take these things called these PARC assessments. That was the name of this consortium of 26 states. At the last minute, Pennsylvania pulled out and said, "You know what? We don't wanna give up local control. We're gonna keep Pennsylvania tests. We're just gonna modify them to be in line with the new standards." So at the last minute, they pulled out of this 26-state consortium, which gives us tremendous freedom and flexibility moving forward to adjust the standards, however Pennsylvania wants, not having 1/26 of the side of how the test get modified in the future, which is really good. So they saved us a bunch of, a whole bowl of headaches by doing that, keeping our independence.
It's not unusual in just about every school district, as the grade level goes up, you see declining math score. It's been that way forever. And we keep, you know, investing in, as a new curricula, which I understand the need for that. But what are we doing to help raise those scores at the middle school and especially the high school level? Is that what, is developing in this new curriculum?
Yes.
Is there something written into it to help with that?
Well, we're really, I think it's more teaching, it's like a system shift. It's the how-to, not just completing the problem, of having the logic to explain why you completed it that way. And I think that's a major shift. I mean, and I think, we just had a math meeting the other day, the elementary principals with Tom Smith, and we were going round and round, but the biggest thing is really teaching students how to be critical thinkers and how to really solve the problems. And then have that automaticity of facts so that they don't have to go to a calculator and that they actually know it. And if we can get that down, the thinking process down, it's gonna help whether you're in eighth grade or 12th grade. It is.
Yeah, if you look at the statewide and nationwide data, performance is up here, starting with the third graders, and if it's in middle school, and then it makes a recovery in New York when you get to Regent's, in Pennsylvania when you get to the Keystone or the SATs, it comes back. So there's a whole thicklness with middle school. And then there's just a million other things that happen in middle school. But yet it's.
Can you do the flexibility that you one way and I need solving the other? And we're telling our kids, now, that's okay. If you can get to the place you need to be, if you can get to that part, and you can explain and justify how you got there, then it's not that we have to push kids into solving it the same way every time because our brains all work differently. So that's a big shift. And as Peg said, that talking, and maybe it's the three of us working on a problem. So trying to make math more real and more applicable and more authentic, and maybe that's the way that the students will better grasp and understand. You know, I think of the way I learned math, and it wasn't like that at all. You had to do it this way, and it was really hard for me to make those connections and hard to maintain and retain that. So that's a big shift in thinking, and that's a big shift in core standards, which I think is pretty better. More hands-on, more doing, more fun.
The last slide?
That's the last slide.
All right, thank you.
Twenty minutes later.
All right. Item four on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Got a motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting held on August 20th, 2015. Motion's believed, so moved by Brian Carso, second.
Second.
Second by Chuck Pike. Discussion. Hearing now, don't move to vote. All in favor of approving motion or force, say aye.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have as the motion is adopted. Item five, A and B are the administrative tendents and financial reports. Your comments or questions?
I just have to make some comments on the administrative reports. I'm so impressed with the work that was done over the summer. If you go through these reports, on the very first page, you see equipment and supplies that were purchased for the Career Ed program, an impressive list of equipment that was purchased and brought in, 67 curriculum revised, PETA 12, 50 in-service workshops performed, 10 technology upgrades, 440 Chromebooks installed, and a bunch of other hardware installed over the summer. Maria, 32 transfer students in special ed since the start of school. 32 transfer students. That's amazing. How did you do that?
With a lot of help, and we're still working on it.
That's why she looks tired over there.
I don't wanna carry on, but I just want to thank our administrators and our teachers for the wonderful work that they did. This is just really impressive.
Thank you, full department. So thank you all for that, too.
And five C are the committee reports. Go to our student representative, Ms. Lucky. Nothing, Sophie?
I don't have the stand, right?
No.
No.
Um.
Yes.
So I wanted to just reflect on, the first thing that's come to you today was the Student Outdoor E-Day. Thank you, Mr. John Bell. A lot of the kids are taking advantage of it in the 11, 12 cafeteria. We're able to go outside, and it's been really good. Also, this year, we did like a new spontaneous fundraiser at the beginning of the year, which Mr. Mobley, we're chief here, actually. Officer Mobley came up to me in the hallway and decided to do a fundraiser for whether to shave his goatee or not, which he obviously had to shave it. We raised $100 for the Red Bandana Charity in honor of Wells Crawley and his heroic acts in 9/11. And these, this charity was, it was kind of spontaneous and new. We just went around and collected money, and I think it was $1 off.
Dollar and a penny.
What?
It was a dollar and a penny.
A dollar and a penny off.
And Mr. Goan put the dollar and a penny in, so I had to shave half of it for Monday.
I thought he was gonna shave half, but this one, he shaved it.
Now my wife would kill me.
Also, the new classes being offered, I've not been able to take advantage of them myself, but a lot of the students who haven't been able to take advantage of it. but a lot of the students who haven't been able to take advantage of it, a lot of my friends have been talking about them, of very positive discussions. So I think that's really good. I think it's a basis from the APs between, and it gives kids a little more critical thinking classes, which I agree from everything you guys are talking about. College and a lot of my college essays I'm writing about is, we need more critical thinking, less testing. Because all the schools I'm looking at are based more on that and the discussion-based classes, which I think a lot of the new classes are focusing on. So, and basically, the only other thing, we're some future events going on, which is tomorrow the Warrior Fest. And I think Student Council has some really cool ideas coming up this year. We're going to try to do some new fundraisers, new activities. And we're doing like King of Biceps instead of King of Legs, if you've ever heard of that, for the, a local charity this year. So that should be fun. Basically.
King of, what was that?
Biceps. It's going to be funny. We have some cool kids doing it, and we got all the pictures. So we're starting tomorrow. We're actually going to fundraise for a month this year instead of just at the Warrior Fest, so we're hoping to get a lot more money to fundraise for one of the local charities. So that should be good.
Thank you, Sophie.
Do we have one sweep up the ceiling?
We have two.
We have two.
Joey had a pasta party in football. It's the first football game tomorrow.
Yeah, sure.
He was so sick.
They did pasta the night before the game. You remember that, right? Because they were.
So if you have to say the outdoor eating was definitely a huge hit, my daughter's a senior, and I think they posted like 10 pictures of that meeting outdoors and how thrilled they were.
Oh, yeah.
Her and like six of her friends, so yeah, that was a very positive thing, I think.
Yeah, it's quiet and kids hate us, but it's really, really good for everyone.
Well, Mr. Law and Mr. DeLaro, I ordered them, they figured out where to put them. And then it was 95 the first weekend, nobody wanted to go outside.
Finally, it's up to the little bit, so people can actually go outside and enjoy it.
Sophie, you're certainly willing to, you're welcome to say, you're welcome to go. I can't predict how long it'll be, so hopefully you're wrong, so.
But you are, because I'll be there anytime.
All right. First on the, uh, enlisted committee, then budget finance and audit, Jack Fisher.
Nothing to report. We're starting audit season until end of the year. They are coming next Wednesday. My office, we're over the last month and a half, two months, making year-end year-end adjustments, the, for reconciling grants in IU 20 and cyber school transportation cafeteria. And then the auditors send out, we send it out, and the information goes directly back to the auditors, to anybody that sent this money. So, well, Mrs. Pierce, that is, and hopefully our auditors have their, everyone's reports back, and then they can confirm that. So that's kind of what's going on behind the scenes, and then the audit starts this coming Wednesday. So October, I'll be looking for a direction after year-end results. Hopefully in October, we'll have some estimate of surplus, because we don't mention the deficit here. But hopefully by next month, we'll have some direction. Other than that, White. Education, John Robles.
I have nothing to report this month.
Facilities, Chuck Pike.
Just draw attention to the executive summer report in our packets, highlight the progress of the building projects. They are on schedule. DBS remains a substantial completion date of June 22nd, 2016. We had a tour early this evening of the DBS site and the building project here. Very, very good informational tour. Two things, you know, I noticed was that being around construction sites, you'd see that these are very neat and orderly, well-maintained. There was little to, no vandalism reported, actually no vandalism reported, which is a good thing. And, you know, safety was foremost. Construction manager, you know, brought out, mentioned that they have safety meetings with all new contractors coming on site each morning, which is important. So I'm very pleased with the way that the project's being managed.
I have a question about the, just one of the updates that we got here. It says the costs associated with bulletin number one and bulletin number two are in review by the project. Can we just get a copy of those bulletins? See what kind of.
Yeah, the.
Those are the rules.
And a lot of those is the value engineering things that we did, too. Like they said, the tank for under our grease trap was way bigger than we needed. So they came to us and said, why don't we go with a smaller one? That'll save you X amount. And there was something with carpet, but we're going to save about $20,000 in the change that we made in carpet. And so a lot of them are, are advantage. So that's why they did those bulletins, is to make the amendments to the original plans.
Does that really matter? Those grease traps are going to be accessible?
Yeah.
Just, well, you got to copy those bulletins.
Sure. And I think they're electronics, only to find out how to get that.
Oh, yeah, don't send me a paper.
Yeah, yeah. I want to chuck you.
I'm with Chuck. Oh, that's, just PDF files, why?
She had a question. Chuck, just Chuck, when is the work on the main campus they're supposed to be done? Like November? Was it November?
No, it's next.
No.
I think that's June also.
The high, everything in the high school and middle school?
Yeah, yeah, they're both all year long.
So that parking lot's going to be that bad all year?
Yeah.
Okay.
When everybody had the deal on opening day is, okay, now you know where you're going for the whole year.
Oh, okay.
That parking lot is good, actually. For a construction site, that's actually pretty orderly.
I squeezed them.
June 23rd, it says down here. The plan is for the pool.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I just, just on a personal note, lost weather days, 14 at the elementary school and five at the, at the high school campus. I'd love, what do these guys do? They get to go inside? What am I missing here, John? I don't get lost weather days. Why do we have 14?
Well, they didn't, like last Thursday, when it poured, they didn't, they didn't do anything. They weren't laying block in the monsoon.
I guess not.
You know?
Okay, so it's masonic.
Yeah, yeah. The going, John had asked the question about, when do we get a roof on, on the elementary school? And they're going to put the steel up by the end of this month, and then they'll have a roof on it by the end of October. Which, and Jack will tell you, all these guys will tell you, it's crucial to get that shell up so we can get inside before the winter hits.
So that they don't have.
So we have that, that's right. We have that protection, and they can be working inside no matter what.
And roofs, I was on a project three years ago in Milltown, and they actually, we had so much snow, they lost the roof.
Yeah.
And then we're out there with Melody Dukes looking for the roof, so.
Wow.
You want to get that roof up before winter, because you don't want to be searching for it.
So October was music to my ears.
Yeah, just to clarify, the, these executive summer reports are on the website, and there's some background on the website that you can see. The high school campus improvements is scheduled for completion October 15th, 2016.
And the reason that date is, sounds so late is because part of the high school project is the demolition of the old elementary school. And we can't do that until after we get everybody and everything out of it in the end of June. So we'll start bulldozing it around to life first. And then demolition, put the parking in, and then do the field out front. So none of that happens until we get the school out of the way.
Right, we expect the completion of the, the building portion to be soon.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. The high school, the high school addition will be June, and then we then spend our resources getting everybody out of that building, getting all the student desks out of that building, because they'll go into a tractor trailer and move them out of there, so all the student desks. And then we come back and start, we start with asbestos abatement, and then demolition of the elementary schools.
Can we get a copy of the construction schedules during the week, too?
Yeah.
Can we get that? Four members?
I was just going to mention that the pool area should be usable in time for the slum season, of course, to, so even though that project goes on, the pool will be there.
Health safety and wellness, Jack O'Leary.
Well, I, safety-wise, I, I looked at the construction sites. I didn't get to go on the tour tonight. I wish, and I really think that they're doing a very good job. There was one small thing that I sent John this week, I'm sure you took care of it.
The hole's gone.
That's great.
Perfect.
But that's, you know, it's minor stuff. So I really think they're doing a great job on it. I took a concussion, we're going to look at our policy tonight about concussion management. And I took two concussion training courses just this week. And it says, I looked at our policy earlier, earlier this evening about it, and we're following what the CDC says to do, so I was very happy to see that. The one part that I think we're missing on the, it says return to play. You have to be cleared by a medical professional to go back to play. But then the CDC has a step policy in that you don't go back to full activity, you have to be integrated back into the sport, starting with low to high. I think that's something we should put in the policy. I'm sure our coaches are following this policy, because in there, we make them go through the training year, but I think it should be in the policy. There's like four steps to go through to integrate, and I think we should add that to the policy.
We'll have to get our hands on that. If that is not in there, so you're right.
No, I can say, yeah.
Is that the return to.
The trainers, trainers have that.
Is that in the protocol?
The kid takes that sheet to the doctor.
Not in the policy, it'd be in the protocol.
No, in the, in the, right, but it references the protocol and the policy.
Okay.
And the trainers have a sheet that highlights the, you know, the low to high activity that they take to the doctor with them.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at the old policy. Good, we did change that, that's gotta be good. Okay, forget I said all of that stuff.
We got the training.
It's really nice to know that we take this serious, because the two trainings on concussion stuff, it's, it's, my little girl had a concussion, you know, and, and, and I thought I learned a lot of it through personal experience with my daughter having a concussion. And I took these trainings, it's just, it's, it's a really serious, serious thing. And it's so easy to get hurt the second time.
Most of our alike, most of your concussions are alike. Every time we have one, there's like different nuance to it. It's amazing, you know? We just had one in the soccer game on Tuesday.
What I wanted to remember is that policy, I recall going through probably two years ago, there were significant changes. The state passed a huge bill which necessitated in the policy changes, so we talked at length about it, I remember, a policy, so, yeah, relatively new in terms of the comprehensiveness of it.
Negotiations, I'll report under nine and aye. There's a, a three-year addendum to both the Act 93, which is the administrative and supervisor contract, and then the business administrator contract. Percentage increases of 2.75 in year one, 2.5 in year two, 2.5 in year three, that matches the lowest from the percentage increase of the professional contracts, matching the superintendent's contract. And the healthcare then switches in those years to reflecting what was in the current teachers and support staff contracts, sort of the way of the world, increased deductibles and copays for these years.
Zach, I have a question on that. We had given a three-year contract for last time. Will we extend this to a six-year contract now?
Well, one year's gone. All right. So five, including the year we're in right now, yeah.
And what was the third year's greatest, was it 2.75 as well?
2.75 in year one, 2.5 in year two, 2.5 the year previous.
Right, the year previous, that 2.75.
Yeah.
That was 2.75 as well, so that's remaining the same.
Like maybe adding three, right?
Zach, can you pull that approval?
Nine ayes.
So last week at the work session, we reviewed a number of policies. We had, already had the Special Education 113 and the Suicidal Learning Day 23 on this agenda for review. After looking at another 10 policies, we added them into tonight's agenda. There were some minor changes. I didn't hear anything from anybody that activated those policies this week. We couldn't put them on for review, so they're here under nine D, and they'll be up for approval next month. We did ask you to spend some time on 122, one, the eligibility for co-curricular activities. There was a considerable amount of discussion about the changes. There were significant changes, a lot, and the administration had given us new policies yesterday, today, when did we get them? Yesterday?
Yes.
And had highlighted in green what they thought after hearing our conversation would make everybody happy, or at least content. I did see in your email that John, you were hoping that we would approve this sooner rather than later, so that it could be enforced.
Use for the ball.
But it's not on tonight's agenda.
We're going to ask you to consider.
It could be under other business. If I have at least a number of people who have read this and approved with the green changes. I would also remind you that if you don't like it, you might just be content with it tonight, let's approve it, and then you can always change it in October, November, or the new policy chair in December.
She's having a brain.
So, so I'm wondering if people have read it and are comfortable with me putting it under other business, to get it on the individual policy?
Is the paper copy in your folders tonight, in case anybody even brings it up?
Yeah, I would be, in the academic warning, you know, the paragraph, the sentence under C, student counting in the cooler departments, it is their academic warning status, declaring all the without satisfaction, my concern that I had.
For people who weren't here last week, so kids were getting kicked off of teams for an inordinate amount of time. Nothing was, seemed to be inconsistent. People were concerned about how many classes you had to fail, and was it more than five and less than two, or was it more than, less than one? So it is somewhat clarified now. I think the big issue was really around how a student is off the, we'll call it a team, but it could be the chess club, from Sunday to Saturday, if they did not fully cooperate with the things that were required under academic warning. They could sort of like just blow off the academic warning, and, and then a week later, it'd be back for, to be reviewed again, and just seemed a little convoluted. So I do think that the green language made it clear, but again, I'm offering that we could at least just approve it tonight, and if you don't like it, next month at the work session, we can discuss it, discuss it together.
I have a question about the subjects. So a student must be passing a minimum of five subjects, or a student must not be failing two or more subjects. So if they're taking a full schedule, so they could be failing math and reading, let's say, they could be passing art and health and gym and still be playing.
Well, they can't fail, you cannot fail. So.
So if you're failing one, you'd be put in academic warning and have to go to mandatory study hall. If you're failing two, you don't get that option, you're automatically ineligible for the week, you're validated.
And how long do you have so you can bring your kids?
It's basically, it's a week-to-week measure. So every week, where do you stand? If you didn't get it back up, then you're still in mandatory tutoring, and you're in warning for another week. Or you could be ineligible until you get, get it fixed.
Who are the co-curricular advisors? Explain that.
That's your coaches, your drama club advisor, every club. This policy applies to every sport and every club. So even if you're in fencing club, you're under the guise of being eligible or ineligible. It's every single club, there's almost 50 clubs in the high school.
Forty-seven.
How many?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven in the high school. So every single club, every single team, in both middle schools, both high schools.
So if you're on academic warning, is there a limit on how long they can stay on academic warning, or as long as they comply with tutoring? They could be, if they play a fall or winter and spring sport, they could be on academic warning all year?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, it is possible.
Can we put a timeline on that? Are they allowed to be on academic warning before?
Well, we talked about this. My husband in French, right? We talked about this. He failed French for three years. In those years when you had to have a language, because then everybody was going to go to college, he didn't need it, he hated it, he wasn't going to participate. You know, it would be nice if the guidance office would have given him something else to do, maybe he would like German, I don't know. You're in French. So for that student who really is stuck in a class that they just can't master, is it fair then that they cannot participate in the chess team all year long? Because they're just having, they're failing that one course.
But if that one course is English or math, at what point does somebody intervene?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great question. And we have all those interventions. That doesn't change, just because you change the eligibility policy, it doesn't change all the interventions that we have for kids. It just says that the, uh, we're removing the gotcha, that you're automatically ineligible because you're, you're a low 65 in one course this week.
I think instead of trying to get a policy that would handle all that, let's just get some data six months in about, so how many kids are in this academic warning, and how long did they stay? And then we could, we have some data to say, oh, this doesn't work, this lets them stay, fail French for three years.
And we can track that weekly by the number and by subject for you.
Yeah.
That's, so that's fine, we can do that. Because it's all done through power schools, so it's simple enough to do.
I, I think we hit the data before we changed the policy.
Well, the bottom line, though, is this, this policy is, the policy we have now is a stupid policy. We've had it for almost 15 years, and now we're finally trying to fix it. So that we're not being reactive and punitive towards kids, we're trying to give them help before we make them ineligible. Right now, there is no mechanism to help them per se before they become ineligible. We're just looking to cream kids, and we're trying to fix that. It's part of the old culture, and we're trying to get rid of it.
Yeah, I understand, I, I, I agree with you, it is punitive, you know? As Gina said earlier, where's the, where's the happy medium? And that's what we're looking for here. I agree with you, it currently is punitive, and I like the idea of the man that's everything. I don't like the idea that a child can be stuck in a room building, continue to fail and fail and fail, without seeing any results in that. I think we have to put something in there that's the sake of this.
Well, I think the point is, and Pam brought that up last month, is that there are other mechanisms for things that we do for kids, but it's not part of the eligibility policy. It's part of our SAP policy, it's part of our after-school tutoring policy, it's part of all the other things that we do. Remember, policies are supposed to be broad guidance, and then there's regulations and practices and procedures behind it, you know? So that's the key, is that we don't want to get into the nitty-gritty of policy, because that's not the purpose of policy.
Pam, didn't you mention something last week about?
Yeah, let me go there now. So my question is, so what you're saying is if we are questioning at what point we intervene, that's more of a procedure, so we wouldn't put that into the policy?
Right, right, because you don't want to, every time we modify procedures to, to find better ways to catch kids from falling through the gaps, we don't have to keep running back to you for revision, review, approval, and then it becomes a multi-month thing. You know, when we see things that kids are falling through the cracks, we want to like, say, okay, what are we gonna do? We've got a problem, let's close the gap right away.
And I understand that, and I guess what it is, is I don't think a survey's gonna take care of it, but I think just some kind of reassurance, so we're not gonna dictate procedure to you, but something to come back to us and say, hey, we did have, you know, an athlete who's been failing math for, uh, four weeks, six weeks, and this is what we did. Just let us know, let us know that. Because I don't want to encounter a student who comes to me and is looking for a tutor, and then I find out that he's been playing sport, but has been failing math for weeks. That's, that would be really irritating to me.
And that, but in this policy, though, I mean, even though we don't want to be super, super like, you know, down the funnel this far, I mean, in there, that's impossible for a kid in this, even with the revision of the policy, they have to go to the tutoring every week.
All right.
Right.
And then you're getting, if the tutoring doesn't go well, then you possibly would refer.
Right, and that's those.
And that is procedure.
Right.
If they're still failing after the tutoring and so forth, someone?
Right, we have all those things. We have the, the, it starts with the student and the teacher having the conference, then we include the guidance counselor, we include the parent, then we start looking at other issues, other, other issues at home, or, uh, social, emotional, mental things, you know? So all those things trigger as we have those different levels of conference and things aren't working. This thing worked, what else are we gonna do?
Could we though add something then, that if they're still failing after a certain amount of time, that puts it into the policy that we're going to refer to that procedure then? So that's, you know, do you want to be processed, whatever it may be, that after a certain point, we're going to? It's in the policy that it has to get followed.
But the point is, Jess, is that, um, Frank Casey didn't need to be referred to the SAP team because he was horrible.
I'm not saying SAP, and you can be, make it broad as far as what procedure we're going to follow, but I want to know that after a certain amount of time, something else, that, that no one's gonna fall through that crack, that it's in the policy, that something else is going to be done. And maybe that's, hey, after the falls, you know, after fall sports are done, before you can play winter, if you're still failing that same subject, we're going to do something. And you can determine what that something is. I'm not saying that we have to be specific about we're gonna test them, you know, for, um, special needs or anything like that, but just that we're, that there's something more that's going to happen after that fall sport is over, before you can play a winter sport, we're all, maybe that's a conference with the teacher, but something else happens before we get there.
And where this is very critical, in my opinion, is at the middle school level. Because I don't want those kids then to get to the high school, and we have missed something along the way. And you know what the red flags are then, when perhaps you would want a more formal assessment. But to prevent that, that student from being an athlete once they reach the high school, we could have intervened at the middle school level if we paid attention.
Well, we could certainly put language in there, we probably don't want to reference a particular season, because some kids don't even start.
Right, that was like.
But what Chuck would say, we could put something in there. If a student is still failing one course at the end of 10 weeks, further interventions need to be implemented.
Absolutely. And I think that would make a lot of us feel more comfortable as far as there being.
And that could be D on page three, that could be, that could be, we could add a D there.
Yeah, I think that would.
And in that way, someone doesn't languish in there forever without extra help.
And that's exactly what I'm afraid of.
On page two, too, just, just clarify for me the language on the, in red, general provisions. A student must be passing a minimum of five subjects, or a student must not be failing two or more. Why do we need all that? Why can't we just?
Chris and Brian had mentioned last week, because of CTE, they have a different seven, different classes. Do you guys want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, one, you asked for three periods.
They have the same class for three periods.
But if a parent's reading this and they don't know the CTE reasons, well, let's be specific and tell why.
I, I think, yeah, that is specific. You gotta keep passing the class, or you can't know.
The reason it has the and, or, the one, the A or the B is because everybody hasn't followed traditional seven. If everybody followed a traditional seven classes, seven periods, then we could just say, if you're failing two or more, you're ineligible, if you're failing one, you're. But because CTE is three class, three periods of one class, they don't have seven classes.
Is that considered one class of failing, if they failed that three-period subject?
It's one grade, right? Yes, it's a grade.
It's a subject.
Yes. And then some of the, and sometimes other classes are two periods, because there's a science lab included and things of that nature.
Do you even need it? Can't you just say a student who's failing one subject?
Well, yes, and that was the other place I was going. If you're failing one subject, this is about you.
Right.
So I mean, why it'll be extreme, just, just my opinion.
Can we literally just B, guys? Can we just say?
Two, two subjects.
Yeah.
Sure.
Right? We could just get rid of A and just say B. A student must not be failing two or more subjects.
Okay. Okay, so, so obviously, man, this is time, this can't be approved tonight.
No, I think everybody's happy.
I agree, I think it's important to pass it tonight.
I think we spent two meetings on it now.
We can work on it.
And now we're ready.
Okay.
I did want to say one thing. I think this policy is a, is a great step in the right direction, uh, for helping students. Um, and, and I'll just put it out there, that if, if any board member's sitting here thinking that the old policy wasn't forced to the letter.
No.
They have their head in the sand. If, if you could count on your hand, on either two hands, how many students on the, I would say that the mainstream, um, varsity, uh, teams were declared ineligible because they were failing one class in any given week, given week. That's, it just didn't happen very often. So to think that, to your, to your point, Pam, that a student failing a class one week.
I'm the wrong person to tell that to, so I won't go there, because I know the other side of, and, and to hear that we had a policy that was, was more subjective to one student, not the other.
I'm not saying, I'm not.
And that's why I want clarity here.
What I'm saying is that this, this policy affords the opportunity for academic warning and to identify those students and get them help, and have a plan in place.
And I think we just added to that tonight, and I agree with you totally.
And that's my point.
And I don't support the old policy at all.
The, the old policy, when the, when the crime, when the, when the punishment doesn't fit the crime, it's not enforced at all.
But I want something that is more objective.
So we're gonna take page two, general provisions, take out A, only have B, which will be the new A.
Right. And on page three, not to exceed 10 weeks.
Without further intervention.
And a minor thing, the page numbers are backwards, starting at page three.
Well, it used to be a, the reason it used to be a two-page policy, so it was always one of two, two of two, and now we've added extra of two, and so the second one is always what the original was, that's why. It's a weird lawyer thing. It's like being, what's the, you gonna say?
John, John, Heather.
Oh, I think it's part of C, a student failing to fulfill their requirement to da-da-da-da-da will be declared ineligible for the following week, Saturday to Sunday, uh, not to, or, uh, not to exceed 10 weeks, so for a limit of 10 weeks.
Your D will be, there, there's a limit of 10 weeks in which some, which a student can be.
Oh, I was gonna make it part of the warning.
Without.
Period.
Well, no, without further interventions.
Without further, A is good.
Right, so that after 10 weeks, you have to intervene.
So how's this?
It's find out from you then what that procedure is or intervention is.
And we can also track and report back to you how many kids made it that long, and what subjects it were, what grade they were. So how's this, a student who's failing one subject for, for 10 weeks will require additional interventions, period.
And that's D.
That'll be D.
Does that make them ineligible? Is that, that's a good question. Is that, that's what you're asking? Does, on the 10th week, does it make them ineligible?
No, no, it's possible to do further intervention.
To do more stuff.
Right, no, they're not ineligible, but it's, it's not the word, not enough.
Could do more.
Exactly.
But whatever you're doing, D, we're, we move to the next.
Right, tutor is not cutting it, now what else do they?
What else can we talk about?
Athletic warning for the football season, and then they become rest, maybe so people go rest.
As long as we are doing something else.
They're told about what's happening.
Right.
And, and we know you're moving.
Yeah. I, I, I gotta say one thing, and this comes from a, from a perspective, I don't know how many of you have nuns. I had nuns. And I had the Sisters of Charity and the Sisters of Mercy, and they were neither merciful or charity. So in a way, I don't find this personally for me as, as being punitive, but I understand those who put this in. And the, and the thing behind it was to get at the apple.
Sit down at the football field.
Right, right, I understand that's how it was put in. I, I just personally went through nuns, and they go just that way, and God knows why.
And only God knows.
Yeah, he does. Very good, touche. What, what I, what I wanted, I want a policy, as we had Jill Gamboni here, as I've witnessed for the last 25 years. I want as many students doing extracurricular activities as possible. Because the result of when a child isn't involved in extracurricular activity, and it's certainly in our area where we have so many commuter parents, nobody's watching that child. And, and, and we have a problem. So, so I want to be less punitive, even though I technically come from the nuns, I say, okay, let's be less punitive. But I don't want that child. When I was 12 years old, the, the age of middle school, in my head, I honestly believed I did not need school. I was gonna be playing, I was gonna be a striker for Manchester United. I honestly believe that to fact.
Do we have kids that think that?
That's exactly right. Right, and then that's the mindset, and then I, but I have to keep my grades up in order to continue to play for long. So, so I can say that's good. Luckily for me, I was, I was academically, I could pass the courses if I needed to. There's a lot of students that don't have my, that blessing that I had, so I don't want to penalize that. I just need to really have a policy that I'm comfortable with, because again, I don't want that child falling through the cracks. I want everything. I want a child to play football, I want a child to play soccer, I want a child to be in band. But if they're failing in a subject, I want us to do everything possible. Because I want that child in band, I want that child in football, I want that child in soccer, and passing math, English, and French, you know, and she's very good.
And also knowing what this does, is this allows you to take failing one to get help without losing the thing they want. Because there are many kids that come to school because of those things they want. Whether it is the tuba, or the fencing team, or drama, or sports, and, and we're not taking away the one thing that gets them out of bed and gets them here.
Can I ask one question? Can I ask?
Stress of the fear of being ineligible.
You can't put a sign.
That's, that's a great point.
One question just out of chaos, because it keeps getting brought up. I don't care, we can pass it to them. What's the point of it? Why is it so important? I just don't get that.
Well, the reason being is that, otherwise, we're gonna create, we're gonna, if we need to say in a month or so, then we're gonna operate this school year with two different systems. And then we're gonna hear whining and complaining of how come people in the fall were held to a different standard than the people in the winter? Are you favoring winter sports, or you do, you know?
Blame the board, but like what Chuck said, that there's not many kids that fall into this category. I just didn't understand the importance.
But the old policy was being circumvented, that's what, that's what I think we were hearing, right? It was not being realized.
I think what you're having is teachers are saying, hey, you know what, it's only three weeks in, I've given one quiz, and the kid bombed it. I don't want to be the kid, I don't want to be the teacher and make the kid ineligible. I've only got one quiz in my grade.
Under the old policy.
Right, I'd rather wait till it's five weeks, and we've got multiple grades, it's progress report time, before I'm whacking some kid, uh, just because I haven't done enough grades, you know?
We've, we've done a number of policies, you know, in my time here, obviously Sue, and Sue before me. Um, you know, some of them have been really big shifts. Um, you have to have it developed a baseline, so, you know, I would suggest that the board revisit it in two to three months, and then look at it and stuff. But you have to, in, in order to have that thing, you have to change the rules in terms of what, what the board's operating under, and then be able to look at that, because you wouldn't be able to track the statistics that John mentioned under the current policy. And I also think, you know, Jack, to your point, this policy does more to address that scenario and keep them included than the current policy at its hands, so.
I'd be okay with approving anything tonight, if we revisit this and say two, three months.
And I can also bring you data too, so you can see, uh, where are we at in terms of kids that are ineligible, kids that are in warning, how long have they been in warning? And we also have the, we can take it by grade, we can take it by subject.
I actually think it feels comfortable before I pass a policy. You know, I, I understand your point, I understand, Josh, that this is punitive, let's get rid of, let's get rid of our policy. Let's get rid of it tonight. But maybe it needs to be fine through the two, three months. And any?
And we might come back to you too, and say, hey, at the end of the year, listen, there's two things with this policy that have got us nuts. Let's add a letter E, or let's delete something, and we can talk about it in the summer, so that I won't put you in this jam.
I think you can give me the makes me feel comfortable term, I really appreciate it. Can we hear the language to D one more time, that we're adding here, please?
Sure.
Gonna add on to C or D?
No, it's gonna be a D.
It's gonna be a D.
A student who is failing only one subject for 10 weeks will require additional intervention on behalf of the school. So in other words, it's incumbent upon us to, to put in, implement additional.
Require and receive.
Will require additional intervent, intervention on behalf of the school district. So it's, it's required by us to do something else, because whatever is going, isn't getting to the point we're trying to get them to. So now we've got to try something else.
I purposely did not answer the email, because I consider policy our most important function, our main function. And I think it's really important that we have these discussions as a board.
Absolutely.
For administrators, for the.
And, and nobody answered, so that's good.
Yeah. Oh, that's good.
Yeah. I just wanted to have time to read it and process it, but yeah, nobody did answer. I, I don't take offense, that's usually the way it is when I send emails.
So, and I think it's important for the administration and parents to know that we value education, it's our first priority.
So can I make a motion that we, or if we're not doing?
All right, Colonia IU 20, Pam.
Uh, the, the August meeting was quiet, the IU spent most of August, all the staff spent August getting ready to initiate their school year. The nicest, I think I mentioned this at the workshop, the highlight was the new ramp. Saved me about 15 minutes getting there, but cost me about 45 minutes getting back. I don't know how I got lost coming back in that ramp. Needs more lighting, more signs, something. But, um, I, what I would like to do, I had mentioned that we would ask the staff, they're much more involved in the IU process, so I don't know if you have anything to report.
We haven't been to any meetings yet. They're actually starting next week, so as soon as our next board report, we will share what we were.
Is the IU having an issue with the effects of having a report?
Um, they're fine, just as we are. Though some of the school districts, there are other, 12 other school districts, they had concerns, but the IU itself was holding its own. In the process of, um, hiring a new, um, transportation director, that actually may have only occurred, I'll find out at the upcoming meeting. Other than that.
Okay, legislative, Pam?
Um, we're on day 81 of the budget. So you probably know more or less than I do.
Still no budget, yeah.
Okay.
Special education, Pam and Jess.
Uh, my only question, Maria, the 32 students, um, where do they fall as far as mild, moderate, severe? And how is that impacting also at the high school?
Really interesting combination, uh, I think I put it in my board report, the vast majority of those students were at the secondary level, uh, a medium amount at the middle school, a very high amount in the high school.
13 and 14, I think.
I believe those are the numbers. We had three students move into high school autistic support, which is the first time we've had any growth in that program. We were actually down to a smaller group this year. We moved them to a smaller location, but it's gonna work out. We manage it, students are in and out of the program enough that we're fine. But, um, we are getting more significantly impaired kids that are coming in. Gone are the days that we had LD kids, learning disabled kids move into the district. They're, they are more significantly impaired. But, but we're managing, and the psychologists are very, very busy trying to get everybody evaluated and into programs.
We have sufficient teachers and.
Yes, teacher wise, we're fine.
And, um, the action plan or the plan for, um, including more special needs and regular education, I was just wondering what you.
Our, our least restrictive environment plan.
Yeah.
Um, we sent off our, we, we did a, an analysis. We looked online for a program that, that allowed us to do an analysis of our programs in terms of least restrictive environment. We submitted that to the state with our plan of how we want to improve, and that was approved. And, um, we are free and clear of all of that.
And what steps are you now taking to improve on, what do you need to do?
We are, we are working with our self-contained teachers to really talk about how they can facilitate inclusion with general education teachers, specifically at the elementary school programs. Because that's really where we wanna, that's where our kids have the best chance to be included, uh, when they're in the more self-contained programs. Um, and it's really about assisting general education teachers in getting to the point where they are comfortable, um, making the changes to the program to make those kids successful. So it's, it's professional development, it's working together with those teams.
Maria is really the IU report.
Have you had the program included from the start? Is, is that something we utilize or no?
Um, we've looked at that, we've looked at a couple of different programs, and the IU has actually brought, uh, to our attention some different programs that, so we're kind of exploring some different options right now. But yes, that is one of them that's come to our attention.
I heard that from IU's staff.
Item 5D is superintendent's report. Very quickly, here we go. Number one, we've had a great first few weeks, it really has gone off smoothly in, in all the buildings and, and, and in the open houses too, so that's great. Attendance is up, we're up about six students compared to last June, even though the graduating class was more than 100 kids more than the kindergarten class coming in. We had so many kids transferring over the summer that we're, we're about positive six, even though we're about 100, we're about 110 down on graduation day. You know, comparing to, so the, the drought is over, and, and they're coming back because the economy's improving. In your folders tonight, I also put a, a two-page spread from the Middletown Record the other day about the building boom with construction projects. Jack O'Leary's got it highly because he built most of them. But if you read those, uh, if you read those, all right, there's construction all over the place in Orange County and Sullivan County, which is only gonna drive more people to live here and work there as they move up from the city. Sophie had mentioned Warrior Fest tomorrow, up to school from three to seven, and then the first home football game at seven o'clock. And then in your folders, um, I revised my super tentacles like I told you in the summer I would, because we didn't know about SPP. We were waiting for the data, now it is done, so I took SPP out and replaced it with a goal about improving the percentage of kids to hire in. So that's in your, in your folders. That's it. Thank you.
Sorry, just one thing you touched on. I, we've, we've heard from the commissioners and Pike Economic Development Authority about getting businesses into Pike County. We lack infrastructure. We're just not getting the jobs, I don't see that. But I agree with you, in Orange, Sullivan County, those areas are growing tremendously with the, with the things that are being built there. And Pennsylvania is very, um, it's very attractive because of our taxes. And because of our structure here. A lot of people are attracted. So I do think, we might not get it from, from our, from our own business in Pike County, and I'd love to see Pike County business grow, I just don't see it. But we will get, I do believe we will get it. We will get, we'll get the kids.
We'll get the kids.
Yeah, yeah, we will get it. And the families that are working in Orange and Sullivan, in these new businesses and these new opportunities that are arising there, we will, I'm sure they'll be buying houses in Pennsylvania. Because it's just as attractive, it's the reason why I live here.
I do agree with that, but.
Item 6A is the treasurer's report, give a motion, please.
No move, second.
By suitcase Casey, discussion. Here now, move to a vote, all in favor of approving the motion, the force say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. I have a, a motion to approve item 7A, B, C, and D, motion please. Moved by Brian Carso, second. Second by Jack Fisher, discussion. Hearing now, move to a vote, all in favor of approving motion, the force say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. Item E is the personnel items, have a motion to approve personnel items, reservations, items A to D, appointments, items A to G, request for extension of bereavement, item A, change of status, item A to C, and change of salary, A to B, motion please. Moved by Chuck Pike, second. Second by suitcase. Discussion. Sorry. She didn't say.
I, I did say.
Oh, I only said, sorry.
We're really. All right. All right, all in favor of approving the motion, the force say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. Item nine is the items for approval. Item nine A is the approval of additional volunteers, you'll see them as an attachment to your board package, motion please. Moved by Jack Fisher, second. Second by Brian Carso, I heard you for. To a vote, all in favor of approving motion, the force say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. Item nine B is the approval of Delaware Valley School District Resolution to adopt out-of-pocket limits for its health plans in compliance with the Affordable Care Act as recommended by the Employee Benefit Trust of Eastern Pennsylvania. You'll see it as an attachment to your board package, motion please. Moved by Jack Fisher, second.
Second.
Second by Chuck Pike, discussion.
If you don't do this, it's a hundred dollars a person per day, if I remember.
There's penalties.
Okay, all in favor of approving the motion, the force say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. Item nine C is the approval of the Resolution on Tax Exempt Debt and Post-Issuance Compliance Procedures in accordance with Rule 15C 2-12, the Securities and Exchange Commission, known generally as the Continuing Disclosure on Clear Takings as recommended by Bond Council. You'll see it as an attachment to your board package, motion please. Moved by Jack Fisher, second. Second, discussion. We didn't talk about this at the workshop last week. All in favor of approving the motion, the force say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. Item nine D is a review of board policies. So review, is it?
It's just.
Just to review items one to 11. All right, I'll take a motion, I'm gonna take the next ones together. Items nine E, F, and G, motion please. Moved by Pam Lefty, second. Second by Jack Fisher, discussion. Okay.
Mr. Schwartz is from Wolfpack.
All in favor of approving the motion, the force say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item nine H is the approval of the request for the waiver of rental fees for following organizations subject to approved insurance. Item one, the League of Women Voters to use Dingman Dell or Middle School Auditorium on October 19th, 2015 for debate and forum for Pike County. Commissioner and District Attorney candidates will also rent the fees approximately $200. Motion please. Moved by Jack Fisher, second.
Second.
Second by Brian Carso, discussion.
Yes, I have a discussion, I have a.
I'm going to abstain.
I'm not gonna abstain, I'm gonna vote against this. We're, we're very fortunate here, New York City school system, you have polling stations within the public schools. We don't have that here. We're very lucky, we're very fortunate. By nature, we declare we're qualified. The one part of this job I really hate is the political, the political part of it. I don't think it has any place in our school system. Our children are Republicans, they're not Democrats, they're not independents. I don't care what a parent is, I never ask a person. Politics that are going on right now around Pike County are very dirty. I don't think we should have this in our school that, that our children attend. Let them find a firehouse, a church, a public library. I strongly do not want this. Because of the dirtiness behind it. And there's sides here, and there's two debates, not so much in the commissioners, but in the district attorneys thing. One side is challenging the other side to debate in a firehouse, the other one is challenging for this League of Women Voters to this. I don't wanna take sides in this. And people say, Jack, you, you're walking down the middle, you, you need to choose. And I tell people, I always walk down the right side of the road. They stand for the children of our district, for their parents, for their families, and for the taxpayer that has to pay to educate our children. And that's the side I'm always gonna fall down on. This politics here, I want no part of it. And I really, really don't want it in our schools. But, you know, I respect what everybody does, but I have to say my part, I vote no on this.
Is that just so you know I'm abstaining because I am a member of the League of Women? It's considered a conflict of interest.
And may like any other organization, provide the requisite, um, you know, compliance in terms of getting approval waivers, and obviously, you know, we have taxpayer buildings that belong to taxpayers and use to further civic cause, so.
And the League of Women Voters is non, nonpartisan, Pam?
Correct, correct, I just don't wanna.
And I understand what Jack is saying about the nastiness, it's campaign, not the commissioner's campaign, but certainly the DA's. And perhaps what we would like to see is additional security. That we require them to have a certain presence.
I'll be there for 500 bucks. The League of Women Voters.
I'm not sure why.
Don't you have a conflict of interest?
No comment.
I'm not sure why we break the beat. I, I don't mind them using the building, I don't wanna pick and choose between what candidates can have a, a discussion, you know. We had, we've had PTAs oust school board candidates in this school before.
And there were some nasty ones.
And, yes, yes.
By nature, we're not.
No, so we don't say yes.
The League of Women Voters is nonpartisan.
Yes, but, but why would they get a waiver, why don't they pay the $200?
It's.
But what do they do? I mean, you should say, let's help.
Our socialists would like to weigh in.
Well, just, just if you, if you do approve, uh, this, or if you approve it with or without a fee, we do have a policy regarding electioneering on campus. So I think it would have to come with a proviso that you know placards, you know, um, you know.
Yeah, no distribution of materials.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, now I'm not sure we have that policy.
I feel we did.
There's something in there about distribution, that came up during the primary.
And there, yeah, so.
That wouldn't be done anyway, League of Women does not distribute.
Yeah, it's, it's like there's any distribution to the students and has to be approved by the superintendent. But, you know, if, if anybody wanted to try to find the policy that said, uh, you can't wear your, you know, vote for John button, um, it doesn't exist. Um, or if you can't have the, you know, vote for John sign on the side of your car parking the, in the school parking lot. It's been said, there is a policy.
In the, in the building use policy, it actually says that no materials can be distributed by an outside organization without that, we will come to superintendent.
Does it mean distributed to students, or does it mean distributed to the area during the event?
How would we go to police this?
Because that came up, when the, uh, when the, uh, home show wanted to have, they wanted to have a booth for one of the political parties, and we said, that's not the purpose of the home show. We approved the home show under the premise that it was a home show and not for this. So we said we, we're not doing that, that wasn't part of the application.
How do we police this?
I think we have to send a notice to the organization, what's on the building usage?
You provide copy of the policy.
Assuming it's an easy.
Yes, it's an easy, that's our.
I don't like it.
Time.
Okay. All in favor of approving the motion, the force say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
It's wish, uh, the motion passes with one in the, one dissenting and one abstention. Item nine I is the approval of the extension of the Administrative Supervisory Evaluation Compensation Plan and Business Administrator Evaluation Compensation Plan through June 30th of 2020, motion please. Moved by Jack Fisher, second.
Second.
Second by Brian Carso, if you recall, I discussed it under committee reports, further discussion. Hearing now, a move to a vote, all in favor of approving motion, the force say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The I, one, one opposed? And the motion passes. Item nine J is the approval to extend renewed listing agreement, uh, number 14-158 with Champ Realtors from October 1st, 2015 through March 30th, 2016 for the beyond opportunity, motion please. Moved by Jack Fisher, second.
Second.
Second by Pam Lefty. Generally like to clarify the difference between.
Uh, yeah, this is just a continuation because we have not closed on the back, even though we voted for the agreement, we haven't closed on that, so the back 35 is incomplete it. And in addition, uh, Champ Realtors are marketing the front eight leaders as well. Whether that would, whether I'll come back to you with potential off of the eighth, or I'll come back to you with the potential of maybe splitting that. Whether that would, whether I'll come back to you with potential off of eight or I'll come back to you with the potential of maybe spreading that.